Calling to order the Monday, May 17, 2021, regular meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here in beautiful Berkeley.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here also in Berkeley.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Here in Berkeley.
Councilmember Gavin?
Here Berkeley.
Councilmember Henin?
Here Berkeley.
Councilmember Price?
Here in Berkeley.
Mayor Turbeck?
Here in Berkeley. Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Are there any changes or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's agenda?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbeck?
Yes. At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge with us this evening as Tal self.
Let's pray. Oh, God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for life. On such a beautiful weather day, we are reminded of the preciousness of life. And it's a wonderful thing to be able to wake up and enjoy relationships, enjoy working. And God, I just pray that you would continue to give us strength. Give the mayor and the city council strength, those that are serving our city, the strength and the wisdom that they need to do their jobs well and to make good decisions for our city. God, we want to be under your blessing. And so I pray that you would enable them to decide and to lead and direct in ways that allow your blessing to rest here in Berkeley. I pray it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Up next is our public comments for items that are included on tonight's agenda. Danny may present your thoughts on issues that are going to be included throughout the evening. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please email the clerk's office at clerk@berkleymish.net or call the clerk's office at 248-658-3310. If you would like to comment and you are currently on the Zoom, please raise your hand. If you are trying to get in, please dial in at 1-312-626-6799 with the meeting ID of 949-2984-6645. You will be recognized by either name or number. And when you speak, please state your name and city of residence. And remember, you will be limited to three minutes. You'll be muted after that.
We do have some people with their hands raised. First to go, I saw Chris. So Chris, go ahead when you're ready.
All righty. Thank you all. My name is Chris Coquisha. I am a lifelong resident of the City of Berkeley and I'm currently in the City of Berkeley. And I had a couple of comments on the agenda today. I definitely wanted to support the proclamations that are listed there, especially the LGBTQIA+ Pride Month and National Gun Violence Awareness, as well as Praxia Awareness Day. Really, really, I encourage the city to move forward with those proclamations. But overall, they all look like good proclamations to make. And I do notice there are a lot of them and that I feel like we may be getting into a territory eventually where there are way too many proclamations taking place, but that's possible. I guess I'll let y'all figure that part out. My other comment would be focused on our resolution of adopting fiscal budgets, budgets for the fiscal year. I've read over our previous budgets because I was recently enlightened by an officer, a police officer that was called into WDET the other day or a couple of weeks ago and talked about how he felt really bothered by the fact that he would often be talked to by the chief of police in his city about not meeting traffic quotas. And I saw that traffic fine quotas and I saw that our budget shows in the recent years, $230,000 in traffic fines, which I think is something that I hope that we can take a closer look at and see how we can discourage our police officers from feeling the need to be fining individuals on a ultra regular basis. Because oftentimes, it's shown that more than likely, most of the people receiving fines are lower income folks. And we also have a study from Stanford that showed out of 93 million traffic stops, 20% or more of black drivers are more likely to get pulled over than white drivers. So it's something that I think is important to take a look at, that study and our budget overall. So just wanted to make a comment about that and for folks to kind of recognize how we have our budget set up. So thanks for the time and we'll talk to you later.
Thank you, Chris. Next was Trevor. You're still muted.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Sorry about that. My name is Trevor Klender and I just wanted to say a sincere and warm-hearted thank you to the City of Berkeley for its proclamation recognizing June as LGBTQ Pride Month. My husband Mike and I have called Berkeley home for nearly a decade now. We've always felt Berkeley to be an inclusive, supportive community, a community where we feel safe to hold hands when going for a walk. And that is not a feeling we necessarily have when we are in other communities in Michigan. There's a reason why so many people who are part of the LGBT community live, work and run businesses in Berkeley. And that would be because of how supportive and forward-thinking this city is. This past year of hunkering down at home, my husband and I have gone on many neighborhood walks throughout Berkeley. And we are thrilled to see so many homes with pride flags or signs showing support for Black Lives Matter or first responders or healthcare workers or signs proclaiming sentiments such as "Love is love" or "Hate has no home here." This is evidence that in Berkeley, we care about each other and appreciate our differences. After all, in this day and age, everyone knows and loves someone who is part of the LGBT community, whether it's a family member, a coworker or friend. And I've got to say, it is easy to be jaded or apathetic to politics and government at times. But what you are doing as a city council with this proclamation to recognize Pride Month in Berkeley shows that you are putting love first, ahead of any political agenda. And when you lead with love, how can that be wrong? Lastly, as a gay family living in Berkeley, I just want to say that making the effort to make a proclamation like this to recognize June as Pride Month, it makes us feel seen when sometimes we think the world doesn't really want to see us. So on behalf of my husband and I, I just want to say thank you to Berkeley for seeing us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Tal.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, in a few moments, you plan to declare June to be LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the City of Berkeley. I, along with the support of the leadership team of Church of the King, want you to know that we commit to love and pray for our LGBTQIA+ friends and neighbors. While we do not affirm our society's attempt to redefine God's design of sexuality and gender, we will do everything we can with God's help to communicate to everyone the indescribable value they have to both God and us. We remain a congregation excited to see people experiencing God's wonderful, life-changing power at work in this community. Thanks.
And then next I have, your name's being blocked. Mary? Go ahead when you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Mary Miller Strobel and I am an Everytown Survivor Fellow and volunteer with Moms Demand Action. As a Berkeley resident, I would just like to thank the Berkeley City Council for your commitment to recognize where Orange Day, which raises awareness for gun violence in our communities and our country, over 100 people each day are killed as a result of gun violence and many more are injured. And the family members who survived that tragedy are left to deal with some of the repercussions of that. And I appreciate Berkeley's support on raising gun violence awareness so we can hopefully reduce some of the lives that are lost every single day. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Not seeing any other hands at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Well, Madam Clerk, did you receive any communications to be read into during communications?
No, Your Honor.
Your public comments? Okay. It does not appear we have anybody else here. Okay. Well, thank you all for your comments. We will end the first public comment section. Remember, there will be a second one at the end for items that were not included on tonight's agenda. And we'll move on to our order of business this evening. First up is the consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, I hope you had a sip of water. Please read the items on tonight's consent agenda.
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 38th regular city council meeting on Monday, May 3, 2021. Two, warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1362. Three, resolution number R1321. Matter of considering a resolution to receive a partial reimbursement of Larvicide product costs from Oakland County. This is an annual program involving the placement of Larvicide tablets in approximately 1,600 city catch basins to inhibit the growth of mosquito larvae. Four, proclamation number P1421. Matter of proclaiming June 2021 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Five, proclamation number P1521. Matter proclaiming the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Six, proclamation number P1621. Matter proclaiming May 14, 2021 as Eproxia Awareness Day. Seven, proclamation number P1721. Matter proclaiming June 2021 as Prep Preparedness Month. Eight, proclamation number P1821. Matter proclaiming June 2021 as Summer Safety Month. Nine, proclamation number P1921. Matter proclaiming May 9 through 15 as National Police Week.
Thank you for that. Knowing that there are just a couple of these that we will be retroactively potentially approving, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Are there any discussion or corrections? All right. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Seeing no comments, would you please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbeck?
Yes. Consent agenda has passed. We now move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one on our regular agenda?
Resolution number R1421. Matter of authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute an agreement with the Berkeley School District to collect and remit the July 2021 property tax levy.
Is there a motion to approve R1421?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening. This is an item that requires a dual action from both the school board, which you see is included in their packet as an action they've already taken, as well as the city council. Every year, we collect on behalf of the school district and several entities in the county, also some regional bodies as well. But the school district is the only one that requires a joint agreement for us to be able to do so. So starting last year, this became an annual item to come before you all. Again, this makes it much easier on our residents to be a one-stop shop for the collection of those taxes. Those fees get consolidated into the annual tax bill and are all collected between July 1 and the month of September when the tax bill comes due there. As people will notice and as we've talked about in the past, only 35 cents of every dollar collected actually goes to the city itself. And actions like this and then collection on behalf of other entities is why that is the case. So in partnership with the school district, they ask that you approve this item this evening for convenience of all parties involved.
Any questions for Mr. Baumgarten or our finance director, Mr. Pollak, who's with us as well? Yeah, as was discussed, this is more of a formality for us, something that we certainly do on an annual basis now for the very reasons that Mr. Baumgarten mentioned. Seeing no additional questions or concerns before the school district gets concerned, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R1421?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbeck?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Ordinance number O521. Matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan to amend section 58-34 of Article 2 of Chapter 58, Garbage, Rubbish and Refuse, to modify the diameter and length of branches and limbs and to prescribe a penalty for violations.
Is there a motion to approve O0521?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Henin with support from Councilmember Price. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a cleanup item. This is what we're reflecting to you guys this evening are changes that have been in place for quite a while. Although the ordinance itself lagged behind several years ago, it was a joint effort between the DPW, the Community Development Department, as well as the city attorney in order to bring you an ordinance that can change with the times that doesn't prescribe as tight of parameters as the previous one did so that it can be adapted to the situation at hand without having to come before council for a first and second reading each time. Derek Schuler is with you this evening to answer any specific questions as well as city attorney John Sterren.
Thank you, Matt.
And Mr. Schuler, you have anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you, Matt. I think Matt summarized it very well. And I want to thank John Sterren, who was directly involved in this as well. Thank you, John, for all your work with this. Basically bringing this into compliance with our current standards, taking out some old language such as clear plastic bags for yard waste and some things that were quite dated and bring it up to speed with our current practices. So several folks involved in this and I think it's a step in the right direction. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Councilmember Price?
Yes, this question, I'm not sure whether it is for Director Schuler or for John Sterren, but I was just curious about the use of those words, garbage, rubbish and refuse. Do they mean different things? Do we need to define them? Do we include them all just for ease of searching if somebody's trying to search for this? Or is there some other reason I'm not aware of why we're using all three of those words every time we make a statement about them?
Yeah, I'll certainly give my two cents. I certainly consider all of them the same, Councilmember Price. But I believe that in a searching context, you kind of want them there just so that folks can find what they're looking for. So, John, I don't know if you have anything else to add on that.
Well, actually, I had, I'm not going to tell you a war story, but I actually had a mock appeal case way back in law school, which was sort of on this issue. And believe it or not, there are court decisions that distinguish between garbage and rubbish and trash and so on. So even though we use them synonymously, they arguably have different meanings. So yeah, I mean, there's a couple of ways. We could pick one term and we can define it very broadly. Or we can do like we did here, which was we did adjust and amend some of the language, but we tried to stay true and not completely rewrite the section. So that's why we added garbage, rubbish and waste. But if council prefers it to be a singular term, we can certainly consider doing that for this to come back to you at your next reading.
I'm fine with including all to make it easier for people to search and find. I'm okay with that. I just wondered if that was the reason or if there was another legal reason for including?
No, not a legal reason other than, as I said, a haunting memory of a law school exercise. But no, not beyond that.
Okay. Thank you for your work on this.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Ryan. I've got a question about the first section of this where it says larger branch to be placed at curbside in front of the premises with butt ends facing the street or disposal by the city chipper service in accordance with the rules, standards and schedules set by the city. The way I look at this, if you place a butt end toward the street, the branch would be perpendicular to the street and it will be extending across the sidewalk. I don't think this is what was intended unless I'm reading this wrong.
We had discussions about this as well, Councilman, and there were differing opinions about how to word this section. So I had both putting the branches sort of in the direction of traffic. We had different thoughts on this. So there's a little bit of contrary opinions, similar to the rubbish, trash conversation. So we just decided to go with this route. I don't have a perfect answer for this one.
Well, the good thing is all my stuff was picked up today with the chipper, so I don't have to worry about it for another week, another month. But if I would have put mine the way I think this reads, I've been blocking the sidewalk. And also, there is, chipper service is not available for tree trunks, logs, root balls and stumps. Do we have any definition of tree trunks and logs that are not covered by this?
So what I would say to that is per the website, we have those standards on as far as thickness and diameters for what's acceptable for the brush service. So I would think anything excessive four inches would be considered more of a log, Councilman.
Thank you. Okay, that was one of my questions. Thank you.
I have a quick question on back to our garbage, rubbish, refuse and all the words that we put in here. Item number, the new number two is containers for yard and we've struck refuse and added waste. So if refuse is no longer referenced in this ordinance, should we, where it says refuse at the top, change it to garbage, rubbish and waste for consistency since refuse is struck here and waste is put in its place?
We can do that. That's a good catch, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Not that I really want to prolong that conversation anymore on these words, but I want to make sure we're at least...
There was no design to that. I think that was just an oversight.
Okay. Any additional questions? Anybody have a question on garbage? How about rubbish? Waste? Refuse? No. Okay, we're all covered. Seeing no additional questions, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on O0521?
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbeck?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M2721. Matter of approving the Berkeley Art Bash event on Saturday, September 11, 2021, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on 12 Mile Road for the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce, PO Box 72-1253. Approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to event dates. The council reserves the right to rescind the permit due to health and pandemic protocols.
Is there a motion to approve M2721?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A little bit different this year than years past. The chamber has decided to move this for the safety of everyone to the weekend of September 11, 2021. As you'll see from the extensive amount of work placed in your packet, the chamber staff, Roseanne especially, who's here with you this evening, has done a ton of research, a lot of work. She's had lots of different conversations with the appropriate city departments. We've been together on Zoom calls on multiple occasions. We do believe that the chamber is porting forth the best and safest event it possibly can with a couple of changes this year to even go above and beyond the call of duty. One of those, as you'll notice from the map, would be to extend this item, the footprint, in order to give everybody a little bit more space. There are safety protocols in place. They've been up to date on the changing rules coming from the states. And they've been working in conjunction with Public Safety Department, Public Works and Community Planning as well. So we feel confident in recommending approval to you this evening. And we think September is going to be made better by having the Art Bash make its triumphant return to the City of Berkeley.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgarten. Roseanne, thank you for being with us this evening. Would you like to tell us a little bit more, if there is more that you would like to tell us?
Well, as far as more, I mean, it's in the packet, but we are, like Hazy said, you know, usually it's traditionally the second Saturday in June and we've moved it to September. And we are changing things up a bit. We don't plan on having, you know, usually we have music in a place where people can congregate and listen and we're getting rid of that. So we're trying and we're increasing it all the way to Coolidge for the recommendation of Public Works and Public Safety. And that was the decision of the best place to move it from a safety standpoint and traffic control standpoint. But it allows to really spread out the vendors and allow more space, not only between, but we'll hope more crowd dispersion. So as we get people, there's just more space between everything for that. So we really look forward to bringing it back. This is, it'll be its 19th year. It's one of the largest outside of Dream Cruise, I would say, events that Berkeley has. And I know the merchants on 12 Mile always and the restaurants look for it. It's one of their usually biggest days with selling and stuff. And they're encouraged to do sidewalk sales so more things are outside and just to keep it as an outside, as much as possible outside event.
Well, thank you for that, Roseanne, especially for the residents who may not have seen the packet as we have to have a little bit better idea of what potentially we are looking at right now. Questions from council members for either the city manager or Ms. Nicolai? Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Thank you. I just have a, well, I guess it is a question on page two of the document under dates and hours of the event. It reads road closed 4:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and I'm thinking it should be 10:00 p.m.?
Yes, it should. It should. Sorry about that.
No, it's fine. And I just, you know, it was kind of glaring at me. But I'll also take the opportunity, Roseanne, to thank you for all your hard work on this. It's a big undertaking, even not in a pandemic. So I can only imagine the, all the twists and turns that you've had to deal with. So thanks for persevering.
Thank you. And we know it's not ending. We do know that things are continually changing, as everyone can see. And that we understand that rules can change, mandates can change. And I told my, you know, my chair of the event... my chair of the event, you know, and she understood, we just have to remain flexible and we're fully aware of, of that fact, that, that, that's just the way things are.
Thank you. Additional questions? The Art Bash, Councilmember Baker?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. And I echo my colleagues' compliments and kudos to Roseanne and the team for all their great work with us. I, I, it's interesting how like timing is everything. And we find ourselves at this stage of society's progress with the pandemic that we can at least entertain things like this with a possibility of moving forward. And I certainly will support this tonight. I want to compliment the team for all their great work, for the coordination with the, with the DDA and with the vendors and with the merchants along 12 Mile and with DPW and, and others to ensure that this is a safe event. I'm comforted by the fact that there's the big asterisk at the end of this. It says that, you know, pending, you know, as news unfolds and things happen, we may need to, to make a different decision as we get closer to the event. So I'm comforted to know that we have the ability to, to do what's best for the community and for Berkeley and for the, the stores and everybody. Just in case things take a turn. But I'm optimistic that we won't need to do that. And that, you know, the vaccination rates will continue to increase. And that folks will honor the recent CDC guidance around masks versus no masks. I would be in favor if the committee chose to request masks be worn. Regardless of your vaccination status, I continue to wear my mask, although I'm five and a half weeks after my second shot. Because I want to continue to take care of my fellow neighbors and colleagues. But, but again, I'm, I'm pleased that we have reached a point as a society and as a country that we can begin to resume these kinds of events in a safe and thoughtful manner. And, and Roseanne, thank you for leading the charge on this fantastic event for our community. And fingers crossed that we, we'll only continue to see an upward trend from here. So I will be supporting this tonight. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Just quickly, Your Honor, I'm very optimistic also. So I'll tell you that today I started the event plan. So we're under, we're underway. So, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Well, seeing none, thank you again, Roseanne, for, for all the work you and, and the group have, have put together to be able to bring back, you know, one of our signature events in the city. It was a, a very difficult 2020 and that, and even into 2021 as, as most of you know, this past weekend would have been Berkeley Day, this past, end of last weekend, weekend. And we were not able to, to celebrate the city the way that we normally would, would have liked to the past couple of years. So being able to even consider this now is something that we think we'll be able to, to move forward in a, in a safe manner, assuming things continue the way they're continuing, at least provides a lot of hope and, and excitement for the path that we're moving down. And, and hopefully a couple of weeks prior to this, we have a nice trial run of, of another event and we'll, we'll keep our fingers crossed for that as well. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M twenty seven twenty one?
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M twenty eight twenty one, matter of approving the Berkeley Street Art Fest event on Saturday, August 7th, 2021 from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Coolidge Highway for the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce, P O Box seventy two dash one two five three. Approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to event dates. The council reserves the right to rescind the permit due to health and pandemic protocols.
All right. Is there a motion to approve M twenty eight twenty one?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion to approve by councilmember Baker with support from councilmember Price. Let's have a nice uplifting conversation again. Mr. Baumgarten, you want to kick this off?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Much of the same applies as we just discussed. This is another event that, as the motion says, was moved from July to August. Again, with safety as being the main consideration from the chamber, which we certainly thank them for. This is a newer event than the Art Bash, but it is no less work for, for Roseanne and the, the team over at the chamber. They put just as much care in consideration as well as co-working with the city's departments into making sure this event is also safe and successful. As you see from the packet, we likewise made some adjustments in the course of the planning process to the footprint of this event with much of the same considerations in mind as with the previous agenda item. So again, we are happy to recommend approval from the various state departments on, on holding this event this year as safely as possible.
Roseanne, would you like to tell the residents a little bit more about what they can look forward to with the Street Art Fest?
Yep. So this will be the fourth year that we're having it. It is going to be a little bit different because in the past, the, one of the themes was, was everyone get a chance to make art. And there were lots of booths where they could do different kinds of activities. We're really cutting back. The primary focus is going to be on the chalk art contest. And then there will be a shop for good village is what we call, and it's going to be vendors who have a, a community service kind of aspect to them. They make items and it goes to charity or they're handmade items from reusable recyclable things. So there is going to be a vendor kind of component to it. And then in addition to that, we are still having the activities of where they could do art, but what it'll be more like is they'll be in pods where, and we haven't quite worked it out yet with, if we have a sponsor, it'll be free for families to do a pod and they'll get chalk and they'll have their own square. It's not part of the contest. It'll be a little different. It'll be different. It'll be there's different kinds of chalk art. So the chalk art that the artist contests, it's, it's still chalk art, but it's a real higher grade, more pastel. They'll have just the traditional chalk art sidewalk art and they'll have their own pod, you know, their, their own square socially distance that they can use to do their own art in a certain section. We've increased the footprint significantly to Beverly. This isn't usually as large of an event as far as attendance because it's so new. I mean, our hope is one day it'll get larger and larger. But with the way we've spread everything out, there's plenty of social distance and we're really treating it as a strolling event. Get, hope to get people out in the summer and walk in the street and discovering the great businesses on Coolidge and just having some fun and being outside. And so there will be a, a little bit of food vendors, but it'll be pretty much the food vendors we're looking at. They'll be already part of the city restaurants that are part of the city. If we have any outside food vendors. And, and that's, that's pretty much what we're looking at. And, and like I said, just slightly different from years past.
Questions or comments for Ms. Nicolai on the chalk art fest, Street Art Fest? Councilmember Blanchard?
My question is primarily for DPW. Where, where are we going to block traffic? I know Gattalbahn is south. Are we going to shut it down from 12 Mile? Are we going to break it at Beverly? Or what's, what's the plan right now, Derek?
Our plan right now is to break it southbound at 12 Mile. So we're going to, we're going to divert from 12 Mile coming southbound. The, the closures is at 12 Mile, but we want to divert that traffic coming southbound right at 12 Mile and get them going in a different direction. And then folks that, you know, there's apartments there that we're aware of on the northern end of, of Coolidge that we need to account for, but 12 Mile will be the breakpoint from coming from the south.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Price?
Yes, Roseanne, thank you so much for such a thoughtful plan from you and the chamber on this. This is one of my family's favorite events. We love the chalk art. We love the murals and the permanent chalk art around town from Davidson. It's just a highlight of our summer. So one of the things that I saw recommended, both in, in this plan and with the Art Bash from Public Safety was that your organization, your crew was ready to follow the current, on the date of the event orders from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. And it seems to me like that's where your plan was going, but I would just love to hear confirmation that you plan on, on doing what, what Public Safety asked as well.
Oh, yeah. No, that is the plan. Again, it, the one thing is, is that like the stuff I've put in is was kind of the current plan back in March when rules, but they do keep changing. So what you see there may change. You know, there might be more requirements. There might be less, but yes, our every intention is, and not even just intention, we will be following those orders.
And I think that makes perfect sense because they are changing every month, every week. And just knowing that you'll be following whatever the current orders are, that's very reassuring to me as I vote to support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Blanchard, you have another one?
Just a comment that I forgot about, Your Honor. On, on some of these, around these applications, it mentions, will there be any electricity outside of the building? And as well for everybody's knowledge that what the inspector looks for when they do that is if you run a cord out of your business up to something on the street, that cord has to be plugged into a ground fault interrupter to make sure that it's safe for the people in the street. So for anything that the businesses do, anytime either this or any other sidewalk sales, they must ensure that they plug their outside cords into a ground fault interrupter to make sure the public is safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Use those GFIs, please. All right. Seeing no additional questions or comments. Again, thank you, Roseanne. It is, as I've mentioned before, same comments apply. It's nice to finally be able to talk about potentially having some of our events back in our community pending the pandemic state of affairs as we get a little bit closer. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M twenty eight twenty one?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to item number five, please, on tonight's agenda.
Public hearing, matter of holding a public hearing regarding the proposed operating budget for the fiscal year 2021, 22 and supporting tax rates for the city of Berkeley, Michigan.
All right. If you would like to participate in the public hearing, then please raise your hand so that you can be recognized. I will officially open the public hearing at 7:43 PM. And while that's happening, in case you're trying to get in, the phone number again is 1-312-626-6799. ID number 949-2984-6645. Then 312-626-6799 with the meeting ID 949-2984-6645.
Not seeing.
Mathis?
Not seeing any hands raised at this time.
All right. Well, just in case somebody was really just dialing in when I said the number the last time, we'll give them another, another few seconds, just in case. Okay. Well, seeing no additional comments for the public hearing. I will close the public hearing at 7:44 PM. And we will move on to item number six, please, Ms. Mitchell.
Resolution number R fifteen twenty one, matter of approving a resolution of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, approving the 2021, 22 through 2027, 28 capital improvements plan of the city of Berkeley, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve R fifteen twenty one?
So moved, Your Honor.
Support?
Motion made by councilmember Baker with support from Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
I think it's mayor. For those unfamiliar with the term, the capital improvements plan is the method by which we plot out for the next seven years, all investments and sidewalks, roads, facilities, parks, any of the physical items that make the quality of life in Berkeley that much higher year over year. The plan that brought to you this evening has been vetted by Planning Commission. They had got to see it first time in draft form in March. Then they saw the, the final draft in April, made a recommendation to this body to fund it in full as well, along with their approval itself. So as per the state law, what comes before you this evening is a plan for investments at about the level of thirty one thousand, five hundred and, I'm sorry, thirty one million, five hundred and thirty two thousand over the next seven years. Of that, this year is $6.9 million. Again, these are physical items. That's not the full extent of the budget, but these are the physical items that we plan to invest in this year. As you recall, I'm sure the memory is still quite fresh. The city spent about eight hours last week, over the course of two nights, going over point by point each of the budgets and how we, each department does plan to invest those funds. So I know council is well versed in this item. Anybody from the public who is interested can still view the, the budgets on the city's website as well, if you're also interested in the capital improvements plan. But this kicks us off. It's the first of four items to come before council this evening for the, for the upcoming fiscal year.
Questions for our manager on the capital improvements plan? And as, as was described, this has passed through the various levels of, that it's required to be on our agenda this evening. We have certainly looked through it and talked about some of the, the items that are coming up this fiscal year. You know, I think it is, is important just to, to note that our, you know, despite the pandemic and despite some of the unknowing of what the future looks like as it relates to COVID-19, this is still a plan that invests significant amount into our community over the next seven years, 31 million plus dollars for the improvements that the manager mentioned that are capital in terms of what we need to continue to provide high quality of, of service and life for our residents. If there are no additional questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R fifteen twenty one?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number seven on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R sixteen twenty one, matter of approving a resolution of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, establishing a residential and commercial service fee for the collection and disposal of solid waste effective July 1st, 2021.
Is there a motion to approve R sixteen twenty one?
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion to approve by councilmember Blanchard with support from councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgarten?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Semi-related to our previous discussion this evening. This particular charge goes to fund the wonderful things like refuse, waste, trash, garbage, rubbish. All of those wonderful items, as well as our recycling and our very popular curbside leaf collection program, as well as the chipper. So anything, again, that's you put to the curbside, this is the charge that helps keep that. you put to the curbside, this is the charge that helps keep that account solvent and keeps those wonderful services in place. Uh, because we are also members of SACRA, the South, uh, Southeast Oakland County, uh, Resource Recovery Authority, uh, we largely partner with them on maintaining the contracts for, uh, the collection of these items. And so that keeps our costs low. That helps us take advantage of economies of scale by partnering with other communities. Um, so we're, we're very happy with the, uh, with the charge this year. We think it's, uh, comes to you not, um, lightly, but after a great amount of consideration on how to keep those services in place at the most cost-effective way possible.
Just for clarification for our residents, can you tell them what that fee is?
Yes, sir. Hold on just one. So there are a couple of different fees, uh, included in here. It sets your, um, the trash can fees. It sets the, the polycars, the, the two cylinder or the two yard, four yard, six yard and eight yard dumpster rates, uh, but the charge itself that most people will see on their water bill, uh, for the residential per, uh, the per residential dwelling unit is sixty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. So for the low, low price.
Yeah. The, the low, low price to get rid of all of those things, refuse, rubbish. Okay. We're not going to do that again. Questions for Mr. Baumgartner? Seeing none. This is relatively straightforward. I just wanted to make sure that the fee was, was in there for folks who may be curious. So I appreciate you, um, mentioning that and seeing no additional questions or comments. Uh, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R sixteen twenty-one?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number eight on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R seventeen twenty-one, matter of approving a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, setting the charges for water and sewer services effective July first, 2021.
Is there a motion to approve R seventeen twenty-one?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgartner?
I think it's Mayor. Uh, this sets a, a couple of different rates depending on the, the factors found at the home, uh, including your meter size. It also sets stormwater fees, uh, and as well as some of the, uh, pollution related fees as well. Uh, we don't come up with these on our own as, uh, as council, uh, knows, but the folks at home may not know. Uh, these are largely driven by some of the authorities that the city is a member of, uh, directly. We're the member of the Southeast Oakland County Water Authority, uh, but then they're also a customer of the Great Lakes Water Authority, uh, formerly Detroit Water and Sewer. Uh, so those largely drive the rates that will come before you this evening. There's a lot of work that happens outside of the city of Berkeley, uh, but through our membership, uh, we get the benefit of, including, um, some measures to keep the cost as low as possible. Uh, but even it within the, uh, the authority itself, the city has generally had one of the lower rates, uh, with, of the fourteen or so member communities, uh, involved here. So we've been very proud of that. This continues that trend. Uh, it's only a slight increase over last year. Uh, in total, it's about, I think about two percent or so. Uh, and part of most, and a portion of that as well is driven by some of the lead and copper rules, uh, that have handed down to us from the, uh, Department of Great Lakes Energy or Energy Labor, Great Lakes Eagle, as it's now known, um, to fund lead and copper improvements across the, the city's water system. So all of those things went into, uh, went into consideration when developing these rates and, uh, we ask that you approve them as included in the memo, uh, this evening.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Blanchard, do you have anything, uh, to say or to show us? I, I would, I would respectfully ask that we, uh, we, we move to the email format for our index cards, if that's, uh, if that's available to you, just to make it a little easier on us.
As soon as I can get the, all the rest of that, we will get them out. I'm, I'm assuming, Derek, the order is stay about the same position on the list that we have before. Next, right down at the bottom. So, yeah, I'll, I'll get working on that. And one thing that probably should know also, all, almost all the rates that we get from like Great Lakes Water Authority are just simply passed through, uh, with no addition from the city. So.
Right. Councilmember Baker?
Uh, no, I was just like hand signaling the passenger notion there, but, uh, but I want to echo, uh, my colleagues', um, support for this. Certainly we do everything in our, in our ability, uh, to, uh, to keep the water rates as low as possible. Largely, these are pass-throughs, uh, that come from organizations outside of our control. Uh, and, uh, Berkeley continues to provide exceptional water service and sewer service for our residents and businesses. And I'm very proud of, uh, the work that we do to keep the rates as low as they are. And I look forward to my index card whenever we get back together in person.
Well, again, we can, we can start with email, I think, and then we can just, you know, save it to our phones. We can always have it that way. I, I, my index card has been through some wars in the past. Um, so I, I, but, you know, I'll, kidding aside, Councilmember Blanchard, we certainly appreciate, uh, you and Derek working together to scour, uh, the neighbors and, and see where their rates are so that our residents can, can truly know where we stack up. I mean, it's one thing for us to say we, we, we keep our rates low and, and, you know, there's pass-throughs, but, and so they can actually see in comparison to, to other communities, what that actually means. I, I, I just don't know that it's quite as real. So I certainly look forward, uh, to that as well. Any additional questions on our water rates, sewer rates? Okay. Seeing none. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R seventeen twenty-one?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number nine on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R eighteen twenty-one, matter of approving a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2021 and ending June thirtieth, 2022.
Is there a motion to approve R eighteen twenty-one?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Henan. Mr. Baumgartner?
I think it's Mayor. Uh, this item, this resolution does a couple of different things. Uh, it, it gives a ton of information. Uh, it starts off first with the, uh, total tax levy that is, uh, planned from the city's standpoint here. Uh, that number in, uh, when you aggregate all of the different, uh, millages that we have equals one five point nine eight eight six. Uh, that number does continue to decrease each year. Uh, and, and it, last time it was raised was by, uh, approval of the voters themselves. Uh, but it does already, as you see, as you've seen in our, our work sessions, uh, it's come down quite a bit since then, uh, for a total of ten thousand four, ten million, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars in taxable revenue. Um, we get revenues from other places, of course, but those are the items that are going to come to us via tax levy. Um, and then the resolution then goes on to detail, uh, each of the different funds, uh, as well its revenues and expenditures. Uh, in total, you'll see that, uh, the city has quite a few funds, uh, nearly, I think fifteen in total. If, uh, if we still count some of the debt ones that have been now zeroed out with the city not having any more debt. Um, so extensively, it goes through item by item, uh, shows you all of the expenditures, all of the, uh, the revenues planned here. Uh, again, as we talked about, uh, in a previous agenda item, if somebody wants to see the line by line, we're, uh, to know where each and every dollar of the city's, uh, revenues come from, or each and every dollar of where the cities are playing, city plans to invest its funds. Um, that budget is available now in draft form on the city's website, but we also will be proudly rolling out a very, um, higher quality budget document, uh, prior to the start of the fiscal year that gives, uh, quite a bit of context of from where these numbers come from. So, uh, the summary of this, Mr. Mayor, is that, uh, the city plans to spend, uh, about twenty-nine point six million dollars, uh, or will receive twenty-nine point six million dollars in total revenues across all accounts. Uh, does plan, does have a planned, uh, use of fund balance, uh, included here, uh, but had about thirty-three thou, thirty-three point five million dollars in investments across all of its funds. So, um, City of Berkeley, for being a small town, um, does operate a rather large budget and that's how we end up maintaining the level of services and the, uh, the wonderful staff that we have before you, um, this year and many years in the future.
Thank you for, uh, the background and, and explanation. And I don't recall a time since I have been part of this esteemed body that we have not had a debt service fund to discuss or look at now the future as to when that comes off. And then Councilmember Baker, I mean, you're, you're, we're, we're about the same tenure. I don't know if you recall, but I honestly don't think we've ever had a budget that had the zeroed out debt, uh, which is something certainly to be proud of, uh, that we've, you know, been able to handle that and we don't have additional debt on there right now is, as you mentioned at the beginning, some things certainly to keep an eye on, the fact that things continue to roll back, the proposal A and, and Headley. So even the mills that voters have approved have obviously rolled back, um, and, and will continue to, to roll back into the future. Um, before I, 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 you know, continue on, uh, other comments from, from council members on our, uh, budget. Councilmember Baker?
Yes. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for the, uh, the lead in on that. Yeah. This is, um, so, so a couple of quick thoughts. First, I want to again thank, uh, Mark and the finance team and all of the department heads for their incredible work in bringing this together over the past, uh, prior months of effort. Uh, what we have tonight seems to have moved along very quickly, uh, but it's the result of their tremendous work and efforts, um, to coordinate amongst the various departments and through Matt and the, and the administration office, uh, to, to bring all this together. Uh, this has been through several reviews, as, as has been mentioned, uh, and is a, is a incredible reflection of our city's, um, values and commitments. I do, um, I do agree that, uh, it is the first time that I recall, uh, being completely debt-free. Uh, they always say your greatest weakness or your greatest strength is your greatest weakness. And, um, the notion that, um, uh, the, the bond, the, the, uh, tax rate will continue to decrease, as has been mentioned several times, uh, will become a concern for us at some points. Um, and so, uh, we will need to think about that. Future councils will need to consider, um, ways to be able to sustain the level of positive investments and, and careful savings, uh, that keep, uh, Berkeley as amazing as it is. Uh, and I offer that simply to help, uh, again, celebrate where we are today and to know, um, what the future has in store for the community. Uh, it's, it's an incredible position that we're in, uh, especially, you know, beginning to see just like glimmers of rays of sunshine, uh, coming out, um, the other end of this COVID, uh, craziness. Uh, and again, kudos to Matt and, uh, and his staff and to Mark and the finance team and all the department heads for, uh, for their great work in, uh, in bringing this very sound and fiscally responsible budgets, uh, to, for our consideration here tonight. I will absolutely be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Price?
Yes. I want to, um, just affirm that I feel the same way Councilmember Baker does in so many of those things. I'm so grateful to the staff, the department heads for presenting us with such a well-thought-out budget. Um, COVID has still left us with many unknowns and that was very much a theme of our budget session is being aware, but knowing that the department heads, the staff, the finance director is very aware of the questions and the unknowns and that the budget was thought out with those in mind. I was also very pleased to see some of the, um, in, increases in salary for staff, uh, who have been working very hard in very difficult situations and now getting up, um, especially these are minimum wage or closer to minimum wage. Now they're getting closer to livable wage staff. I'm very pleased with that and very pleased with the new positions created, uh, providing more continuity between departments and potentially quite a bit of cost savings for the city in the way that our buildings are operated. So pleased with the way the budget was presented, pleased with the foresight and the thought that went into it. Thank you very much to our department heads and staff for presenting us with this budget.
Thank you. Additional comments from council members? Councilmember Blanchard?
Just a quick comment. I'd like to say that over the past 10 years that I've been doing this, I think the, the budget that we get to review has gotten better and better and better every year. So it makes it a lot easier for us. So I think that the finance staff has done a tremendous job of putting together a budget that is easy for us to read, easy for us to go through and, uh, we can get things done easier and better than we have in the past. So I'd like to just thank everybody, all the department heads and the finance staff for doing a tremendous job. Thank you.
Certainly. Um, I also want to, you know, echo those, those sentiments, certainly the, the work of the finance team, your Mark and Lori and Sue, but also, as you mentioned, the department heads. And, and this year in particular, navigating the, to most of the circumstances of preparing a budget in a largely virtual environment. So normally they're, they're kind of in the building with each other and it's easy to sit down and make some changes and tweaks. This was done, um, primarily a hundred percent virtually. Uh, department heads had to be prepared early with their budgets so that Mark and the team could put them into, into a format for us to go through. And this budget maintains capital investment in our community, uh, but also personnel investment in our community with the characteristic high level of service that we're accustomed to, but also leaves flexibility and security for the realization of, of a post-COVID world. And although we seem to be, you know, as we mentioned, moving back to some small sense of normalcy in our personal lives, the true impact of COVID won't be realized for municipality until some years into the future. And, and this budget does allow us additional flexibility in, in multiple places where we will be able to adapt, um, if the situation certainly calls for that, combined with the, the fund balance policy that, that we put into, uh, practice a, a couple of months ago. We'll make sure that we continue to not only provide the high level of service, but also do it in a fiscally responsible way that keeps plant Moran, uh, giving us hopefully unqualified audits as they look through our numbers and, and we discuss the future, as well as continuing to honor the promises that we made in the past. Uh, that's certainly something that this council has spoken about and councils prior to this many times. Uh, I'm sure the finance director and the city manager have had nauseam heard that and, and understand that it's something that is important and we will certainly continue, uh, to make sure that we're doing that at the proper levels. Well, those were my communications today. So you guys all got lucky. That's going to be super short now, but I figured it was the right time to work it in there. So seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R eighteen twenty-one?
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We have now reached our second public comment section of the evening. These are four items that were not covered on tonight's agenda. The same rules apply as before. You get three minutes. Um, and if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff, uh, please make sure to email the clerk's office at clerk@berklee-mich.net or call the clerk's office at two four eight six five eight three three one zero. If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand or dial in at one three one two six two six six seven nine nine with the ID nine four nine two nine eight four six six four five. You'll be recognized by name or number and when you speak, please state your name and city of residence.
Do you have one, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, go ahead.
Whenever you're ready.
All right. Hello again and thanks, thanks again for the time. Uh, just wanted to make a quick little comment to let the public and everyone know that the recording of the ranked choice voting presentation that was presented by Kevin Deegan Kraus, uh, is available on the city's YouTube page. So if you go to the City of Berkeley's official YouTube page and you go into the videos, it is, it was posted about two weeks ago. So you may have to scroll down a little bit, uh, but it is listed as ranked choice voting, more choices, more voices, question mark. And I also wanted to just highlight a quick little note from it that I thought was really a great takeaway. Um, that, you know, it's notable that our city does not have primaries for candidates in, uh, in, in public office and that. And that is one of the key actual reasons that we might want to consider ranked choice voting because we don't have a say in what candidates actually go on the ballots in, from the various parties, uh, as opposed to other cities that do have primaries leading into them. And that was noted because also Ferndale used to ha- have that same process, but they have approved ranked choice voting, but, uh, still awaiting approval for, to be able to go, move forward using it. So I just want to encourage everyone to check that out. Um, definitely, it was a really great discussion and a really great presentation. So thank you again for the time and, uh, best to everyone here.
Thank you. Not seeing any more at this time.
No other presence today, Tori? Okay. All right, we will close the second public comment section and we will move on to communications. Ms. Mitchell, who would you like to go first?
Councilmember Price.
Councilmember Price, you may be done.
Thank you, your honor. Um, and I want to give big thanks to our city leaders and staff and residents who submit proclamations for us to consider. This year in our virtual world, we haven't been reading the proclamations out loud. And I think at least during my time on council, this is a new record of six proclamations. But I wanted to use my communications time tonight to do something a little bit different and to highlight a whereas and a therefore from each of our proclamations. Um, these that I chose are not meant to, to dismiss other wherestes or therefores. They were just ones that seemed either particularly timely or, or relevant. And I timed myself. It doesn't take much more than five minutes, but I think it's worth doing. So number one, whereas while we as a society at large are slowly embracing new definitions of sexuality and gender, we must also acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. Therefore, the City of Berkeley urges the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in the City of Berkeley to recommit to increasing our support and recognition of the contributions made by lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, intersex, asexual and non-binary identifying members of the community and to actively promote the principles of equality, liberty and justice. Number two, whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID nineteen pandemic continues to exacerb- exacerbate gun violence. After more than a year of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines and an increase in city gun violence. Therefore, the City of Berkeley renews our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledges to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership in order to keep our children safe. Number three, whereas May fourteenth marked childhood apraxia of speech day, during which awareness was raised throughout Michigan about childhood apraxia of speech, an extremely challenging speech disorder that affects one in one thousand children. Therefore, the city council calls upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in the City of Berkeley to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of apraxia disorders and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with apraxia disorders. Number four, whereas it is critical that effective public education campaigns concerning pet safety and preparedness procedures continue for the benefit of all Berkeley animals. Therefore, the city council encourages all citizens to educate themselves and others about preparing pets for all emergencies and further urges residents to ensure that their own pet disaster preparedness plans and kits are in place for the safety of their furry family members. Number five, whereas it is estimated that from two thousand five to two thousand fourteen, there were approximately ten deaths per day related to unintentional drowning, underscoring the importance of taking the proper precautions before entering water activities such as swimming during the summer season. Therefore, June twenty twenty-one is hereby recognized as Summer Safety Month in the City of Berkeley. And the City of Berkeley urges all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools to commit to learning and sharing proper safety and emergency procedures. And finally, number six, whereas three hundred and ninety-four new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including two hundred and ninety-five officers who died in two thousand twenty and ninety-nine officers who died in previous years. Therefore, the week of May ninth through fifteenth is hereby recognized as National Police Week in the City of Berkeley. And the City of Berkeley publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. By recognizing and wait, this is my own words, sorry, I'm no longer reading off of our agenda. By recognizing and raising awareness of lesbian, gay, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual and non-binary community members, gun violence, apraxia, pet preparedness, summer safety and law enforcement, Berkeley demonstrates that we are a welcoming, inclusive and safe community that cares. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, your honor. A couple of quick things as, uh, Councilmember Price just said, uh, Summer Safety Month starts in June. I just want to remind everybody that, uh, this weekend is going to be eighty-eight degrees. So that's pretty close to summer. So let's start thinking now about, uh, watch it out for the kids that are playing in the street because they're out there. I saw them again today. Uh, watch out for heat injuries. Be careful around pools and lakes. Uh, we've got to start thinking summer because we're, we're going to be pretty hot in a couple of days. And the emergency management front, I got a quote for you. Preparation through education is less costly than learning through tragedy. And that's from Max Mayfield, Director of the National Hurricane Center. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Blanchard. Councilmember Baker?
Uh, thank you, your honor. That's, uh, that's great stuff for sure. Couple of quick, uh, quick committee updates. Uh, the DDA met last week, uh, and there are active conversations underway around a DIA-sponsored mural on the Robina side of the old Berkeley Theater, the, uh, the Rite Aid Building. And it's a, uh, an exciting project for sure. Uh, actually this morning, there was a subcommittee meeting of the design committee from the DDA, uh, to review some potential, um, designs for that mural and it's, uh, it's really exciting. Um, at the DDA board meeting, uh, on May twelfth, there were some questions about the DDA design guidelines, a document that, um, that project started, uh, around four years ago and the DDA had already spent, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, on the project. Uh, but yet it's, it hasn't been approved, it hasn't been ratified. Uh, and the board is kind of unclear as to if and when, uh, any of that work will ever, uh, resume. So we certainly, uh, the board would certainly appreciate, um, some progress, uh, through, uh, the staff and administration to, uh, to make sure that, that work is at least, um, uh, acknowledged and, and advanced if, and hopefully brought to bear. Uh, and, uh, they remind us again to visit downtownberkeley.org, uh, the website, uh, to take a look at upcoming events, uh, including, as mentioned earlier, uh, and approved by us, uh, tonight, uh, conditionally, uh, the Berkeley Street Art Fest on August seventh uh, and the Berkeley Art Bash on September eleventh. Those are tremendous, uh, engagements for, uh, for our community and our downtown. Uh, the historical committee would like to say happy birthday to the City of Berth- Berkeley, a little early. Uh, but it's interesting that the number twenty-three seems to continue to pop up. Uh, I, at first I just thought it was because it was the name of my famous, my favorite baseball player, uh, Ryan Sandberg of the Chicago Cubs back in the eighties. Um, but, yeah, in terms of Berkeley news, uh, it is the, um, uh, the year that, uh, Berkeley became a village, nineteen twenty-three. And, uh, we became a city on May twenty-third of the year nineteen thirty-two, which coincidentally is the twenty-three reversed. So there you go. Uh, so we're coming up on a pretty cool event, uh, milestone for our, our fair city here, which is, uh, super awesome. Uh, technology committee, they, they meet again, uh, on June sixteenth. Uh, and, um, uh, the board at their last meeting, uh, had, uh, some additional questions about the Alexa skill that they had put together. Uh, there was a, um, uh, some effort by the committee to put together an Alexa skill, which you could add to your, to your, uh, devices and ask it all sorts of cool questions about City of Berkeley, upcoming events and timings of things and, and, uh, rules and procedures. Uh, that's been over two years in the works and, uh, we haven't, um, actually seen that, um, make any progress. So there's some questions about that. But what, uh, another conversation that they covered was the notion of open data. So open data is, uh, is a concept that's been well instituted, uh, in many, uh, uh, regions throughout the country. And it's a way to provide, um, Berkeley's residents with some greater information. Uh, and as the cyber tip of the month, to be aware of the fact that, um, open data aims to make government more accountable and, uh, open, uh, opening government data, uh, increases citizen participation in government. It creates opportunities for economic development and informs, uh, the decision-making in both the public and private sectors. Uh, the Open Data Initiative is well underway at the federal level. If you visit data.gov, it's, uh, can, it's had tremendous success at the state level at michigan.gov slash data. Uh, and our neighbors, uh, to the near south, Ferndale, uh, have a very vibrant, um, initiative already underway called data.ferndalemi.gov. Uh, and these things include, uh, everything from budgets and business listings, code enforcement, construction permits, crime, uh, parcels, uh, procurement contracts, property deeds, public buildings, transit and zoning and, uh, all sorts of amazing things, uh, that can help, um, our community better understand what's going on. So I'm, uh, continue to be encouraged that our advisor committee is exploring these topics. And I hope, uh, that the city will embrace these kinds of things, uh, perhaps a bit, uh, more quickly than the Alexa app, which still is on the shelf someplace. Um, and I'd like to quote, close with a quote from, um, from Ronald Reagan. You might remember him. He's a famous actor, did, he was on all sorts of great movies. Uh, and he said that, uh, the right to vote is the crown jewel of American liberties. And we will not see its luster diminished. Uh, and I offer that up as a quote tonight, uh, because most of us have heard about these new, uh, voter reform laws and reforming quotes there, uh, that have passed in, uh, several other states. Uh, we may know that, um, forty-seven states have introduced, uh, bills, uh, along this line. And only Delaware, Ohio and Vermont are the holdouts in, uh, in pursuing this, uh, this path. Uh, and, uh, because of course, at least some of us know, uh, that all of these laws are entirely based on a false premise and the big lie. Uh, many of these two hundred and fifty laws that are being pursued or bills that are being pursued, um, across the country are drafted from standard templates, uh, that were created by the Heritage Foundation. Uh, and it's sad, uh, kind of picking up on my comments from last time about integrity and honesty. It's sad to have to say that there was absolutely no widespread, widespread voter fraud, cheating or related voter integrities. And, uh, the Trump administration, um, declared that this was the most secure election in decades. Uh, over a hundred and fifty-nine million people voted in the general election and their own statistics identify one thousand three hundred and twenty-two documented cases of fraud, uh, including, uh, this one guy who, uh, murdered his wife and then proceeded to vote on her behalf in favor of Donald Trump. So there you go, voter fraud. Um, and that equates to zero point zero 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 eight, uh, percent, um, voter fraud, uh, which does not seem to pass the sniff test in terms of a widespread voter fraud. And you're basically more than ten times as likely to be struck by lightning, uh, as, uh, as you are to, to commit to voter fraud. Um, I offer this because Michigan, um, has, uh, many bills designed to restrict access to voting and make it more difficult, uh, for people to access their voice, to exercise their voice. Uh, the Senate is working its way through thirty-nine election reform bills that are motivated by lies. Not only would these, uh, make it more difficult for people to vote, uh, but it would put additional burden on city and, uh, city court staff. We, uh, our governor has, has not indicated any inclination to, to sign such bills if they were to mer- work their way through the legislation. Uh, but the Senate's intent is real and, uh, and this should not be taken lightly. Uh, and what I, my, uh, closing thought here is to ask that, that our city, um, overcome our exceptionally racist background. Uh, as you know, we were one of the, the hubs of the Ku Klux Klan back in the day. Uh, and continue the tremendous progresses, as pointed out by my colleague, Councilmember Price, uh, with the, um, uh, with the actions that we've taken yet tonight. Uh, please be aware of what's going on. Please stay aware of that. Uh, stay in touch with our Senator and State Rep. Uh, and again, it, it sends me to have to say, please tell the truth and base your actions on facts and reality. Uh, and with that fact, I'd like to, uh, to, to, again, thank you all. Please stay safe. Take care of yourselves and your family, uh, and I appreciate your time tonight. So thank you, your honor.
Thank you. And every time you mentioned the A word, A L E X A, that is, I kept getting likes up here and I had to, uh, keep it turned down because it wanted to know what I was trying to figure out. So I appreciate that. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Yes, thank you. I have a lot of Parks and Recreation updates for you tonight. Um, Parks and Rec is hosting a senior to-go picnic on Wednesday, June ninth, beginning at eleven thirty AM with a to-go box lunch from the lunch cafe and entertainment by the Banjos of Michigan. The event is free and will be on the lawn of the community center, but pre-registration is required. Transportation, uh, will also be provided, but you have to register for that as well. So if you would like to register for this event and transportation, uh, call the Parks and Recreation Department at the community center at two four eight six five eight three four seven zero. Parks and Recreation is hosting, uh, an outdoor moving night, movie night on the community center lawn on June twenty-second. Um, you can join your neighbors safely for, um, outdoors to watch a movie and eat snacks, which will be in single-serve individual packages. The movie is to be determined, but it's going to begin at seven PM and there's no cost to attend. The citywide garage sale is June eighteenth and nineteenth. Registration again is free and may be done through Parks and Recreation. All participating homes will also be, um, put on a large map that'll be posted online so you can see who's participating. Specialty camps and summer day camps still have some openings. You may go online at berkeley dot maxgalaxy dot net or call Parks and Recreation to register. Outdoor programming continues and registration can be done online or by calling Parks and Recreation. And finally, the Tot Lot and Oxford Merchants Park playgrounds will be open in the coming days and that's very exciting news. Um, you may check the city's website or the Parks and Recreation Facebook page for announcements on when these parks will officially open. Today is not that day. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henon.
Yes, thank you, your honor. First, I just want to echo and support Councilmember Baker's election integrity statements. I serve on the Michigan Municipal League's Election Subcommittee, where we look at in depth at some of these laws and make recommendations to the MML Board. And I serve with some other municipal officials and city clerks around the state. And while some of the, very few of the proposed bills do have some merit, most of them are premised on lies or things that simply aren't necessary. And we do need to watch and preserve our democracy. Next, I want to report that the Tree Board wants to thank everybody on council for supporting the increase in tree funding. They've already started filling out grant applications for purchasing more city trees using the provided matching funds. And that's an effort that's really being led by Tricia Lozzi. The city arborist came to our last meeting to discuss the trees on Coolidge and 12 Mile and their impact on the sidewalks. The tree selection there was never really an appropriate choice. And now they're starting to cause a lot of problems. And the arborist is looking for some directions on how we want to handle this, what the city's long-term plans are for trees in our downtown district. So the Tree Board wants to have a broader discussion with all the relevant stakeholders so we can strategize on long-term planning for our downtown trees. They also reviewed an ordinance concerning attaching things to city-owned trees. And the ordinance is, you shouldn't. But they'll be making some recommendations on some small changes to that ordinance, but also an education campaign. That's more of the emphasis to help educate people on what is and isn't appropriate. Their next meeting will be in June, to be determined if it will be in person or still virtual. The Zoning Board of Appeals also met last week. They heard a case held over from the April meeting. They approved a variance for a small addition to the front of a home, but denied increasing the size of the garage and denied the addition of a pool that would be too large, too much lot coverage for the property. And currently, there's no ZDA meeting scheduled for June. Then finally, I just want to continue to urge everyone who can to get vaccinated so you can get rid of your mask and we can get back to normal. Looking forward to when we can start holding these meetings again in person. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin.
Thank you, your honor. Couple of quick things on meetings, Planning Commission. Next regular meeting will be on May 25th at 7:00 p.m. Master Plan Steering Committee, tomorrow's meeting was canceled. So the next one will be actually June 15th at 7:00 p.m. And the Environmental Advisory Committee will meet at 6:30 p.m. on May 20th, which is this Thursday. So, and then at the, at the risk of being repetitive, but I don't think city staff will have a problem with this. But a big thank you to Matt, Mark, Lori, Sue, all department heads on the work that was done for this fiscal year's budget. It's certainly very difficult to put together such a comprehensive document. Takes a ton of work and it certainly doesn't go without thanks. So a big thank you to everyone that was involved in that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank you for all the council members who have had the kind words for, for city staff. I, I too want to say thank you to, to Mark and Lori specifically. They do a ton of work on shepherding this process through working with all the different department heads, working with myself. They, they do have the lion's share of this work, but it, it can't go without stating our thank you to city council as well for the time and the vision and the direction that they offer up year in and year out. It's the framework which forms this budget. We invest based on your, this council's priorities. And we thank you for being clear and upfront about what those are and how you'd like to move the city forward. So it's, it's, it's a mutual appreciation. And I think we're all very proud of the budget that was approved this evening. Thank you to everybody who has volunteered. We have a process right now we're going through where that's going to be asking all of our volunteers to indicate whether or not they're interested and to continue to make the city a better place. So they'll be hearing from staff liaisons, boards and committee chairs, all the above, in, in order to try to get a process together that makes reappointments or finding new volunteers for committee positions as simple and as easy as possible. So looking forward to the improvements there as well. And last but not least, in light of some of the changes made at the state and federal level, the city staff will be working together this week to try to make some pertinent announcements on reopening our buildings to the public. We didn't get a lot of notice on that change, but we will be working together to react as soon as possible. And we just ask that people be incredibly patient as we figure out the, the best way to keep our staff safe as well as the, the visitors as well. City Hall just isn't the same without the public. We love to be the hub of the community and we're excited about returning to that position again. Again, we just need a little time to react here, but we'll be making announcements coming out. So thank you to all, thank you to everyone for your patience. And that's all, Mr. Mayor, I have.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and good evening again to the council. Well, my, my goodness, after such a good productive meeting and all the, the thoughtful and informative comments of council, I somewhat sheepishly say that I really have nothing new to report to you this evening. All is well.
That is not a bad thing when the attorney says all is well. I feel like that's something we don't hear quite enough, so I'm, I'm okay with, with that. Most of the comments that I was going to make, I had an opportunity to talk about during the meeting. I, I do want to say Happy Tax Day to everybody. I know we are a little bit later, but if you haven't filed yet, you do still have a little bit of time before midnight. And remember, the failure to file penalty is harsher than the failure to pay penalty. So at the very least, file and you will have a little bit of a break in fines. And finally, I want to congratulate Assistant Superintendent and DDA Board Member, Scott Francis, who will soon become Superintendent. Scott Francis of the Berkeley School District. The school board chose Mr. Francis to succeed current Superintendent Dennis McDavid, who is retiring at the end of this school year. We will certainly recognize Mr. McDavid for all of his accomplishments to our schools and our community, hopefully in June. And we certainly look forward to, to working with Mr. Francis in the future. Scott and I exchanged a couple of emails last week. And his time on the DDA, he said he, he has a, a much better appreciation and feel for how the city operates and finances. So certainly, or, and, and operate his finances, I should say, which is certainly a great thing because we know that working with the superintendent and the respective municipalities, we certainly have to work together. We've had a tremendous relationship with the school district, you know, really over the past 15 years or so. And I certainly look forward to, to that continuing. And that, that's with the caveat that it wasn't always that way. You know, if we, we won't go back a little bit further, there was a, I won't call it animosity maybe, but, but there were a lot of, there's a lot of sharpness in some of those conversations. And that certainly has not been the case, certainly with former Superintendent Mike Simic, certainly with, with Mr. McDavid. And I see no reason why that would change with Mr. Francis. So we certainly look forward to working with him and continuing to build that relationship. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, your honor.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Gavin. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbran?
Yes. The May 17th, 2021 meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley is adjourned.